I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting, Monday, September 25th, 2023, 7:00 PM, McKetty Council Chamber. Agenda. Item number one, points and allegiance.
Point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, who are the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Moving on to agenda item number three, considering accept Town Council minutes, Monday, September 11th.
Mr. Chair. Roll call.
Roll call first.
Yep. Is there a motion, a second?
No, you gotta do the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Shenier?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Excused.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
McKetty's here, Montigny, Counselor Montigny?
Present.
Counselor Ortiz?
Present.
Counselor Rivas?
Present.
You hear? Move on to three, considering accept the Town Council meeting minutes, Monday, September 11th, 2023.
So moved.
Is a motion, is a second?
Second.
Second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes in the meeting? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? One abstention, Ortiz. Motion passes. Moving on to four, subcommittee reports, DPNW.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on the 18th. Ten items, number 38, 40 through, and 40 through 46 are on here. Also, I have items 28 through 35 on ARPA. That's all I got.
Moving on to Education and Services, Counsel Rivas.
We had a meeting on Wednesday, September 20th. We have recommendations on items 15 through 21 in tonight's agenda.
Moving on to General Gov.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on the 18th, and there's some items at the beginning, some at the end. I'll speak to them later. Thank you.
Planning and development. He's, he's been excused tonight. Moving on to protections of personal property, Counsel Shenier?
Yes, we had a meeting, I believe it was September 18th, and we have three items that have been approved by the subcommittee. No meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have no announcements at this time except a, a quick comment to the councilors. I'd like to thank the subcommittee chairman and the subcommittees for being so diligent on staying on task with each and every agenda item and not really running off. And the meetings were actually enjoyable this week. We got a lot of work done, a lot of committee meetings. They were piggybacked on some nights. I just think you guys did a great job. Let's keep going with it. Moving on, Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, on behalf of the Town of Southbridge, I'd like to express our condolences to the Brackett family for the recent passing of John Brackett. John Brackett was a full-time firefighter in the Town of Southbridge, being laid off in 99, and then came back as a call firefighter for about 17 years, retiring as lieutenant in the Call Fire Department, and recently had served as our Airport Commissioner. So, express condolences to his family. I know we have an extensive agenda tonight, but there are some things I'd like to update you, the council and the community, on. First off, I know I had said at the last meeting that we would review the grants, but given the extensive of this agenda, 50, 55 items, I believe, I put any presentations off to the next meeting. In regards to some projects, the Henry Street Press Box, we've been meeting with Southridge Softball Association, as well as the representatives that are doing the building from the insurance company. The building permit and demo permit are in process. They recently received a go-ahead from National Grid that the power was off to the building. They, I've worked with the Southridge Softball Association based on some of the specs on the building, and that press box is slated for completion on November 30th, 2023. I know issue that we have talked about when I was on council, as well as Town Manager, is blighted properties. I had a meeting with the inspections Department, Director of Health, and the Building Departments. It was nice to see that we reviewed the list, and a multiple number of those properties that had been on the list for a number of years have now come off the list and actually have been returned to the tax rolls and being renovated by certain individuals. So, that list has shrunk. There were some new properties that were reported, and the Director of Public Health will be reviewing those properties and making recommendations. As of tonight, if it is passed, Attorney Caprera will become our attorney that will be working with us on the processes to complete that next segment of moving forward on that list. But it was nice to see some of the properties that had been on a long time that were in disrepair that have now, with the planning board, speaking, giving them their variances and everything to be restored. So that was great to hear. I know the council is looking for an update on Mill Street, the Mill Street property, at 30 Mill Street. That property continues to be in bankruptcy court. In regards to the safety of that area, I asked the building commissioner, building inspector to look at rent or purchase and fence so that we can at least fence it off for right now as we pursue the legal course of action on the bankruptcy court. I do have quotes for that fence. We're gonna recommend purchasing the fence so that the fence can be here in the town if we need it for any other projects. Our building department is working with the tenants that are adjacent to that on a traffic plan so that they can get to their businesses. So, we will be working with our legal team to see what next steps we may take, but we're gonna be working to secure that property, at least with fencing, so that it is safe in that area. In regards to the Charlton Street Sacred Heart property, as we know, the owner has secured the fencing, or property with fencing that he purchased, safety netted on the spires. His engineer indicated the building was safe. We're gonna be reviewing with our legal team as to any next steps and what process we may have to take, given the fact that there is a legal, or engineer's report that it is safe. So we wanna make sure we protect the town and make good on the use, make the right decision on that. In regards to the Curbside Enterprise Fund, we had a kickoff meeting with the Collins Center that the Town Council had approved. We're gonna be working with Anna Smith in the inspections Department because she had worked a lot on the casella contract with the Town Manager's Office. And we had our first meeting on Friday, and we'll be gathering information. It was a good meeting to kick it off with specific timelines to make sure that we're on target for March of 2024, so that we can have that enterprise fund in place. I have spoken to Anna about developing some educational materials because I have had residents come to the Town Hall asking, what is happening? How much am I gonna be charged? When is this gonna take place? So, we do see a need that we should start at least some educational programs to get that information out, that things will be changing. In regards to staffing, tonight, happy to bring several candidates forward to fill positions, interim assessor, permanent treasurer collector, human resources director. The executive assistant to Town Manager, I appointed Matthew Fitten, was promoted from downstairs to assume the duties of the executive assistant to the Town Manager. I'll be working with Counsel Adams to schedule a DPW meeting with the Director of DPW for a promotion on one position and some candidates to move forward so that we can get it for the October 16th meeting, because that's the next meeting, so that we have time to get them in place and hired. And we did put out vendor bids for snowplow vendors, so anybody that's interested in And in regards to the water, I know there's been some concerns about the color of the water. That is a seasonal issue. Stephen Gregoire, the operations manager of Whitewater, has provided information, and a lot of it has to do with the excessive rainfall that we have had this year. One of the workers, Steve Blanchard, had told me that there's 20 inches more of water this year, rainwater than normally, that we have on a normal year. So, a lot of it has to do with water and the warm temperatures. Usually what we'll see is that it'll flip when they change reservoirs, but however, due to those factors, it did not take place this year. But the water is quality water that's safe for drinking, except for the aesthetics and maybe some thoughts, but it is safe to drink. And today, I, I know that a lot of issues, well, not issues, but a lot of concern in the community about the migrants that have been coming to the area. We had a meeting today with approximately 20 partners in the community. I think it was a great meeting. We had a lot of dialogue with the different resources that we have in this area. Conversation was held as to the Town of Sturbridge. The Town of Sturbridge is very concerned about what the impact it has on their town, and comments have been made that maybe they should move them here. Southridge will do what it's always done, is be out there to assist any resident or any person that comes to our community, and we will be working on that process, but it was a great meeting. And finally, a lot of activities that I attended, and to Counsel Lazo, I'd like to thank you for the meet and greet that we held at the Italian Club. So, that's all I have tonight. It's a pretty extensive list, but that's what's going on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to presentations. We have no presentations tonight. Moving on to citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to speak or address the council to any items that are not on the agenda? State your name and address.
Esteban Carrasco, 29 Summer Street. I just wanna take this opportunity to just come before you, to just give the community and you guys an update on where we are with the Bridge of Faith Youth Center, as it's an exciting time. Next Thursday, October 5th, we begin our fall programming, and we will be using the Jacob Edwards Library, the Pioppi Room. Obviously, our learning center is still not ready. Construction and supplies are all over. So, but we are going to begin our fall programming, and we're excited. We have four teachers ready to go to provide, again, no-cost tutoring to any, 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 any child, youth, grade six through 12. Subject matters, math, English, social studies, science, and Spanish. So, that will begin October 5th. And then we've also partnered with Our Bright Futures, as we stated several times, and we have purchased several robots, and we will begin the robotics program for the kids. That'll be, they, that slot will be from four to five at the Jacob Edwards Library. The only thing we're asking is that they register so they can participate. We also have a pending partnership, well, it's already, it's not part, it's not pending, but it's based on the need and the desire of the kids, the financial literacy program with one of our local banks in town, that they will come in and provide Banking 101, check writing, budgeting, how to deposit, how to withdraw, what it is, the importance of knowing credit even at a young age, and even developing a small business plan. So, that will be taking place. That is currently the, the schedule of our fall programming. It starts October 5th. So I just wanted to come and update the council because we are starting, but we've thought outside the box because we wanna get the program, we wanna get the kids going. So we are gonna use the Pioppi Room at the library, and we wanna thank Margaret and her staff for making that available to us to be able to facilitate these programmings for any child, grade six through 12, that have parent consent to be part of it. Again, there's no cost. I have a flyer that I can pass out to all of you. They can scan the QR code, or they can go right to our website, bridgeoffaithyouthcenter.org, and they can register there. One important element that we have, which is the safety program, KidCheck. It is up and running, so we are asking parents that are going to be part of the program, the kids, to sign up and register with our KidCheck program on our website as well. What that does is anytime the child shows up, the parent, guardian, whoever does the sign up, gets a text message. He's here, she's here. And anytime they leave, they'll get the text message saying, they're not here, they're here. So, we want them to obviously sign up for that feature, again, for the safety of the child and also the knowledge of that parent or guardian knowing where they are. That's all I have. I don't know if they have questions, but that's where we are.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issue not on the agenda?
My name is Father Carlos Ardila. I won't take much of your time. I just wanted to stop by and thank you. I guess you're aware that for various reasons, we weren't able to take the ARPA funds, although they were pending for approval, right? But I know that we sat down with you, and, and you were open to talk to us and, and to be, you know, of help, and those funds were gonna be a big help for the maintenance of our properties and everything, but unfortunately, we couldn't take them. But I just wanted to come in person and thank you for your willingness, for all you do, and, and obviously to, just to assure you are continuing, continuing work for the preferential option for the, the poor and the disadvantaged that we have in our parish, and, and I'm looking forward to working with you in, in the future and in next future opportunities, all right? So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? If there are no citizens coming forward, we're gonna move on to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Michelle I. Hill as the Treasurer Collector effective January 2nd, 2024, for a three-year term to expire on January 2nd, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion and a second discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Very happy this evening to bring forward Michelle L. Hill as our Treasurer Collector, as well as Finance Director. That'll be a separate motion as the Finance Director. As you know, our longtime assessor, Mindy Ernst Funia, had left numerous years ago, and since that time, we've held multiple individuals that have held that office. It's being, currently being held by our interim Treasurer Collector. It's not often that we're able to gain somebody that has as much experience as Michelle. Michelle has served as the Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk, one of the only ones, I believe, still in the state, where she holds all three positions, from 2006 to the present for 17 years in the Town of Southwick. She has served as President of the Massachusetts Treasurer Collector Association as long as on the E-Board there. She is a veteran as a United States Marine Corps Supply Accountant. She has experience in munis, which is beneficial to our community. She serves as the munis person at the Town of Southwick. She holds a Master's in Public Administration from the University of Connecticut, and a Bachelor of Business Administration from the University of Southern Indiana. So it was a great pleasure that I bring her name forward as my appointment as the Treasurer Collector and then subsequently as the Finance Director for the Town of Southridge, in a position that everybody agrees is very vital for the financial security of the town. With, with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, Jack, thank you for bringing this individual forward, and I'll keep it really quick, but I've been fighting, Michelle, I've been fighting this battle for a long time, as being the only Marine around here, so it's glad to see that he got it right as a Marine, so simplify and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Michelle, if you wanna come forward to the microphone, that'd be great.
If you'd like to say a few words to the council, feel free.
I didn't come prepared for that, but first I will say simplify. I don't get to work with other veterans as well, so this is a privilege as well. No, I look forward to working with council. I've been with Board of Selectmen, so I've had selectmen base, so this will definitely be a little different for me, but I do look forward to working with each and every one of you. It's a new position for me, growth, a lot of growth for myself personally, so I'm pretty excited about it. So, so thank you for considering me.
Any questions? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Looking at Ms. Hill's resume, very impressed with it. I think you'll do really well here in Southridge, and I am welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
We're gonna do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniels out. Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor McKetty is a yes. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number 10, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Michelle L. Hill I. Hill as the Finance Director effective January 2nd?
So moved.
2024. Motion by Counsel Shenier, seconded by Counselor Adams. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, it's, given her experience and the need for Finance Director, we do not have anybody currently available to fill that position, and she has also served in the Windsor Locks Board of Finance for 13 years, so she has that experience as well. So, no doubt that Michelle brings us a wealth of information, and she is eager to take on the challenge of that job.
Any discussion, Counsel Shenier?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to make a correction to the official record of the names that's been spelled wrong?
I've, I've been reading it as Hill.
Hill.
Because it's a typo.
Okay.
They don't have to do any checking.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call. Vice Chair.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor McKetty is yes. Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
unanimous vote, but moving on to 11, vote to ratify the employment contract between Michelle I. Hill as Treasurer Collector, Finance Director of the, and the Town of Southridge. Clear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Adams?
Mr. Chair, just a couple corrections on the contract itself, real quick. Under section three, the second page, removal from position, should say just cause.
Oh.
And then on the third page, under section 5C, it should be replaced, Town Manager agrees, or the town agrees to pay that, as Town Manager. It's the third page, section 5C, first line.
Yeah.
Shouldn't say Town Manager.
Any further discussion? If not, I'd just like to make a quick comment. What's going on and to the public, it's basically rebuilding the Finance Department in a different way with the Human Services, HR. So I think what we're doing is moving in a different direction as far as knowledge, experience, and I think it's gonna work out really well, but these are the first building blocks that we're putting in place at this time that are vital. And I think the Town Manager's done an outstanding job on going out and, and, and working on this, and he didn't sit back waiting for anybody to come to him. He was out there going out and getting it done, and I thank you for that, Town Manager. No further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
McKetty's yes. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number two. Go ahead.
I'm gonna sign it before she leaves.
I'll call for a five-minute recess for the signing of the contract. I'd like to welcome everybody back to Southridge Town Council meeting, back in order. Moving on to agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Manny Silver as interim Principal Assessor effective immediately on a part-time basis at the rate of $100 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Counselor Montigny, a recommendation from subcommittee?
Thank you. It was voted yes, three to one.
Any questions? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just like the Treasurer Collector's office, our assessor's office has been vacant for a number of months with the transfer of the former assessor to the Town of Palmer. In that regard, we were looking, we did not get a lot of applications for the assessor, and it's very difficult in this time right now to find assessors. Former interim Town Manager Charlie Blanchard had provided the information for Manny and indicated that he may be willing to come to the town, and I did reach out to Manny. Manny has been in government for 40 years. He has been, he was the principal assessor for the Town of Wilbraham for 34 years, president of the Hamden Assessors Association for 12 years, interim assessor of the Town of Palmer until they hired a new assessor, which the one that they hired ended up being there for a short time and left, and ours went to Palmer. So that's how the mobility goes. Interim assessor for the Town of Munson, and is currently on the Board of Selectmen in Ludlow. So Manny will work one to two days a week as needed to provide us, and there are a lot of things that we have to tackle right away in the assessor's office with some chapter 61 filings that need to be done pretty quickly, and the two individuals, Jasmine and Francine, have been doing the best that they could to keep that office afloat, but they definitely need a strong presence there, and this will give us time to either recruit or see who is in the office that may be able to step up. So with that, Manny is my, my appointment as the principal interim assessor. Thank you.
Mr. Silver, would you approach? If you'd like to make comment to the council, welcome aboard.
Firstly, just like to say I'm impressed with the venue here. I think I'm gonna go back to Ludlow and see if I can get some upgrades in ours. We sit at the desk, you know, in the, in the office there, and this is very impressive. I like it. As Jack said, the, the previous assessor reached out to me, or not the assessor manager reached out to me and asked if I would help, and certainly I, I'm available, I'm retired, so I have some, some free time to, to help. I did go into Palmer, helped them out, got them, and excuse the pun, I'm only here to help you over the hill, so.
I'll be working with her, I'm sure.
So, just to get you, just to get you past the year, get you done, get all the, all the documents sent into the Department of Revenue, get your tax rate set. I believe I talked to Roy Bishop, which is your consultant for commercial industrial and all that, and I believe he's, he's pretty well set with that. The values are pretty set. Now it's just a matter of getting all the paperwork, the office in order. Jack has also mentioned possibly trying to train, train the, the office staff. It's, it's always important to have succession in the office, and you are in not such a good position, let's say, with the office. So hopefully we'll be able to get it. I'll help check out, like you said, my need with, with hiring somebody permanently, and I'll be here to help him out with whatever I can do.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes.
Vice Chair. McKetty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was the only one that voted no on this, and I'm, I'm still gonna vote no tonight. I think $100 is an hour is way too high for this employee, the assessor. It's the, would be the highest employee in the Town Hall. We do have a Schedule I as a bylaw. I consider it a bylaw, and the payment is not that high, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor McKetty is no. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Take off my retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you a couple more.
Just, Jack, just give your call, and we know when you want me to.
Okay. You can stay here, though.
Thank you.
We're behind you.
Yep, tomorrow.
You can start tonight if you like.
You can come in tomorrow.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 13, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Robert Caprera, of Caprera and Camer Caprera as a special town attorney for limited matters involving the Board of Health, Inspections Department, and related matters effectively immediate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Discussion, Town Manager?
Thank you. This was a request from the Board of Health and Inspection Department. Attorney Caprera has worked for us in the past, was very familiar with a lot of the housing court issues. They were requesting us to bring back that local approach because we wanna get this, things rolling, as I articulated early in the meeting, and Attorney Caprera, when I reached out to him, was very enthusiastic about coming back as we are now. And Attorney Caprera, when I reached out to him, was very enthusiastic about coming back as we are now growing this team here in Southbridge.
Any questions? Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just letting you know, it was unanimously recommended at Subcommittee. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I have no problem voting for this. I just, I don't see the need to have the word "special" in there. We have, the Town Charter says Town Attorney, doesn't say "special Town Attorney." It does give you some leeway in hiring some, another counsel for other issues. So I just don't think the word "special" is needed. That's not, I'm still gonna go for him. Just thought I'd let you know that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Town Manager?
Actually, our Town Attorney is Colm Moon Page as Town Attorney. So this would be just for special, this special purpose. So that's why it's Special Attorney. The Town Attorney is Colm Moon Page as of right now.
Any other discussion?
Okay, K. Law.
No further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti, yes. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Eight zero. Welcome back, Mr. Caprera. Looking forward to working with you. Moving on to agenda item number 14. Vote to approve the amendment to Schedule 1, Town of Southbridge Classification Compensation Plan, effective July 1, 2023. Change HR Director, Assistant Town Manager, to Director of Human Resources, A9. Clear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Town Manager?
Thank you. As I stated in the General Government Subcommittee meeting, this was, Town Council was loud and clear about the HR Assistant Town Manager should not be that classification. I agree with that. I mean, we did not, when we voted for it for the former Town Manager, it really, we didn't really think about what the duties would be. So this is just to bring it in, the recommendations of Town Council.
Any recommendation from Subcommittee?
Yep, it was three to one in favor. Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I voted against it because I felt that this is, you're removing the Assistant Town Manager position out of this, but not changing the salary. So I felt the salary should be a little lower than with that Assistant Manager duties involved. I did look around. I know that the Town Manager looked around at some of the communities, and I was looking around at entry-level HR. So I thought it should be a little bit less in the schedule, and so that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, through you. I agree with Counselor Marquetti regardless, you know, keep discussing the rate, but you want a backyard mechanic or you want a technician certified? I mean, we have a problem in the past. We hire these people with a cheap rate, and we give them two positions, and then look what happened to us. All these problems, all these mess, all this illegal thing happened in this town. And I think time to move forward and pay what people deserve and have a right staff and right employee to do the right job for the Town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Any other councils at this time? Counselor Rivas?
Just a quick question about the other piece of the title. Will there be a separate Assistant Town Manager position, or will that fold into the Finance Director? How, what happens to that?
My opinion is there's no need for an Assistant Town Manager in such a small community. And moving forward, I think what we have to keep in sync is we're trying to reconfigure and rebuild the Finance Department and HR, which are the two most important departments right now that we have big problems with. And we're coming out of it, and the Town Managers work diligently on it. But I think what we have to keep in mind is HR should not be tagged to the Manager's Office. HR is a employee benefit employee that represents that. Going forward, I think we're gonna continue to build on how we do business in the front office and going down into the Finance Department. I yield to the Town Manager, if you'd like to steal that. But I think what the councils have to keep in mind is, we just went through some terrible times here with the Finance Department. We finally got a handle on it, and we're gonna start pinching pennies. It's gonna be expensive to correct this problem. We knew it before we embarked on it. Now we're gonna do it. We have to do it. Let's take care of it.
Point of order.
Mr. Town Manager?
Point of order.
Take your point of order.
Counselor Lazo, you're the chairman of the entire Town Council, so you need to maintain some sort of, at least an appearance of impartiality. So it's better if you just call the votes, run the meeting. If you want a debate, that's fine. Give up the gavel. I would suggest you go over there and talk. But other than that, as a Town Chairman, just run the meeting.
I don't rule in favor of your point of order. When I call for a point of clarification, I can clarify what we're doing. Obviously, you don't understand what we're doing. Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
I'll just hold on Counselor Rivas's question to the next agenda item because it talks about the job description there. So this was just changing the job classification on the salary schedule to eliminate the Assistant Town Manager. I'll talk about your point in the next agenda item.
Any other discussion on this agenda item? If none, I'd like a roll call. Vice Chairman?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti is no. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Seven one?
Yep.
Seven one, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number 15. Vote to approve the changes in the job description for Assistant Town Manager, Director of Human Resources, A9, to Director of Human Resources, A9. Clear motion?
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Mr. Montigny, General Government Recommendation?
This was recommended unanimously at General Government.
Town Manager?
Thank you. This goes into what we had discussed earlier, but to answer Counselor Rivas's question. Is there a need for Assistant Town Manager? There may be, but however, given the way our charter is set up, we don't have a mechanism that allows the Assistant Town Manager to have any duties of the Town Manager by charter right now. So we'd have to take a look at that. As it stands right now, the Finance Director would be the interim Town Manager upon any absence by the Town Manager. So we will take a look at the whole operation throughout the year and determine what's best for Southbridge. But as of right now, the mechanism in the Town Charter is that the Finance Director would be the interim Town Manager in my absence. So that is covered in that vein.
Any other questions, the manager? If not, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti is yes. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
unanimous.
unanimous of all present. Moving on to General Gov, excuse me, agenda item number 16. Vote to confirm Town Manager's appointment of Nora Elgaderi as Director of Human Services, effective immediately. State of Ethics in Good Standing.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Mr. Montigny, recommendation from General?
It was recommended unanimously.
Town Manager?
Thank you. As you can see tonight, we were appointing people of high quality that have a desire to work for the Town of Southbridge, that bring experience. Nora has worked for the Town of Southbridge for approximately two, two-plus years. First started off in the CDBG office, working there as the Administrative Assistant, then being recruited up to the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager, where she worked for approximately a year, then moved over to the HR Specialist Benefits Coordinator. When Adriana, or the former Human Resource Director, left that position, Nora had stepped up and has worked diligently in that office. And anyone that I have spoken to about Nora and about her performance and her interactions with town employees, as well as department heads, all spoke highly about Nora and her abilities to work in this position. So it was without hesitation that I recommend or that I appoint Nora as the Director of Human Resources, effective immediately.
Any discussion? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to Town Manager and then Nora out there. You know, I've known you since you started working here, all the way downstairs, and then you got stolen and put back up here, and then you got stolen again and put back over here. So I'm glad to see you sticking with it through the good and bad times. I always used to say you can always learn from the bad as much as you can learn from the good, and I appreciate all the hard work, the professionalism. You kept through those periods of time when there was uncertainty within this Town Hall. And I highly, I would highly recommend you anywhere in this Town Hall to work, just based on the fact that you have a great work ethic, and you continue, just like many of our staff within this Town Hall. But I just wanna say thank you for sticking it out with us as we've gone through a lot of trials and tribulations here the last couple of years. So thank you. Wish you the best.
Nora, would you approach the roster? Would you like to make a comment to the council?
Sure. I just wanna say thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to continue to grow within the Town of Southbridge.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Nora? Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti is yes. Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Eight, eight zero in favor. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Moving on to agenda item number 17. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Natalie Adams to the Council on Aging, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025. State Ethics in Good Standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Town Manager?
You have the recommendation of each.
I'm sorry. Counselor Rivas?
This was recommended unanimously by the EHS Subcommittee.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just comment on all four of the individuals that have been appointed to the Council of Aging. We had three resignations. These individuals put in letters of interest, and we're filling the positions in, on that board to assist Katie as she continues to grow the Senior Center and the Council of Aging. So with that, those are my appointments.
Any discussion by council? Go ahead, Mr. Montigny.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Thank you for helping push this forward so quickly. It's great to see that after so many resignations that the board has filled them and filled the whole board, to my knowledge, as well, after tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments by council? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Counselor Adams has recused himself. Moving on to 18. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Dave Landvin to Council on Aging, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025. State Ethics in Good Standing. Clear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion the second? Motion by Shenier, seconded by Montigny. Discussion? Recommendation for Education Services?
EHS recommended this as well, unanimously as well.
Any further discussion by council? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to number 19. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Louise Mayewski to the Council on Aging, effective immediately through June 30th, 2026. Pending State Ethics. Clear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Recommendation for Education Services?
Also unanimous recommendation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 20. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Michelle LeBeuf to the Cultural Council, effective immediately through June 30th, 2026. State Ethics in Good Standing.
So moved.
Motion by Shenier?
Second.
Seconded by Ortiz?
This was also a unanimous recommendation by EHS.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 21. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Bonnie Lynch to the Council on Aging, effective immediately through June 30th, 2026. State Ethics in Good Standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Counselor Rivas?
Unanimous recommendation by EHS as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 22. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Darren Schmelz to the Airport Commission, effectively immediately until 6:30, 2026, upon State Ethics.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. General Gov?
This was recommended unanimously.
Is Darren in the house?
Darren is not, but Mr. Clements and Ron Plofa are here. So this is, I received a letter through to my office that Mr. Schmeck is a plane owner, assistant at Thompson, Connecticut. And Rick has unanimously recommended him, as did Ron. And with that, this was an out of, well, we allow, our bylaws allow an out-of-town appointment. So this was an out-of-town appointment. And as I stated earlier this evening, with Mr. Brackett's death, we'll now have another opening. So.
Mr. Clements?
Thank you, Rick Clements, Chairman of the Southbridge Airport Commission. Myself and the Commission are very excited to have Darren apply for this seat on our board. Again, the Commission allows one out-of-town person to be present. As you know, about two-thirds of our planes are from out-of-town folks that come to Southbridge. So having someone from the outside gives a view of what they think about Southbridge and brings ideas to the town. Darren's been at the airport just over four years. About this time, he got his license here in Southbridge, keeps his plane here, and he's spent a lot of time volunteering, you know, fixing some equipment, help mow around the fields and things like that. So we are excited to have him come on board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
I know the question always comes up, did you meet that candidate? Yes, I did meet Mr. Schmeck personally in my office and had a conversation with him as well.
Any further discussions or questions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Moving on to 23. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of John Daniel as the Town Designated Delegate to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. This is the information that I provided at the last council meeting, that Counselor Daniel would step up for that position to replace Counselor Adams. And he would be at Town Manager's appointment. We still have an opening for an alternate as well. On the Planning Board side, it's Cassandra Ackley and David Pay are gonna be the Planning Board parties that are gonna attend that. Also, as an aside, Counselor Daniel represented the town in the Central Mass Municipal Planning.
CMPO.
And was selected as the, selected as whatever it is, the lead for our region. So he stepped up to that. So he is the lead for our region as well. So he's taking it head-on. So that's my appointment for that. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 24. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Dale Farren to the Traffic Commission, effective immediately through June 30th, 2026. State Ethics in Good Standing.
So moved. Second.
Is the motion the second? Motion by Adams, seconded by Dow. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shouldn't this be a reappointment since Dale's, Mr. Farren is already on there? It had expired by the time. Oh, did it? He did the appointment. So he did the appointment. So take that away.
Mr. Chairman, this was recommended by the PPP Subcommittee unanimously.
Unanimous by PPP Subcommittee? Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 25. Vote to approve the changes in the job description classification of the Town Account, A3, to Town Account, A6.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor Montigny?
Thank you. It was recommended unanimously at Subcommittee.
Unanimous by General Government. Are there any? Are there any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this was simply, the only change in this was the A three to A six because of the way the schedule was. No other changes in the job description outside of the classification, because on a Schedule One, it is an A six, not an A three.
Any further discussion? If not, Counselor Rivas?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just maybe describe what that change is for residents, just what does it mean to?
So the town has a compensation salary schedule, and each position is rated into different categories, from A one, which is the town manager, don't call me on the spot here, but through the various different levels. Originally, the way it was is Town Accountant slash Finance Director was together, which was an A three. Technically, they should be separated. Accountant is a specific appointment, and the Director of Finance is a separate stipend appointment as well. So that's just cleaning up the classification to make sure it matches in our policies and procedures and rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-six, vote to approve the changes in the job description classification of the Director of Finance Town Accountant A three to Director of Finance A three.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Mr. Town Manager?
General Gov?
Unanimous recommendation.
Unanimous by General Government? Thank you. Counselor Montigny?
This is the same thing, it was just taking the Director of Finance and making sure they're classified in the right A three category with the stipend position.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-seven, vote to extend the Tri Valley Meals on Wheels use of the community center until eleven one twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Montigny, seconded by Shenier. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, we're all aware of the Meals on Wheels issue. I have had meetings with Ms. Prince, Lisa Prince, the Executive Director of Tri Valley, and they are actively looking at a variety of locations. I communicated to her that this council was working with her, just felt it was for everybody's peace of mind that we formalized it until November first, two thousand twenty-three. She did submit a letter to us saying that after visiting a variety of different locations, they are currently in negotiations for a potential site, and that she's confident that the move on the program will take place no later than November first, if the extension is granted. So I request that you grant that request to extend that.
Again, a point of clarification, the town council will not throw anybody on the street, especially the Meals on Wheels. It's been rumored to do that, I just want to clarify, we are working hand-in-hand with Meals on Wheels, they are very important to the Town of Southbridge. Any further discussion? Counselor Rivas?
Through you, Mr. Chair, do we know if the proposed site is in town?
It is, but they're actively working in town. As of the last conversation that I had, one of the locations was located next door, and we've had communications as to possible arrangements to utilize some of our parking spaces, and then she also had another location that she was looking at in Southbridge, was the last communication, but they have a strong presence in Southbridge, and her intent, to me, was that they were planning on staying in Southbridge.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, I know I was at this meeting, or we discussed this, why can't we just move this to the sixth? It's our next town council meeting, just so it doesn't overlap like it did this time?
It goes to November first, not October.
I'm sorry, November sixth. Just take it to November sixth, which is our next town council meeting in November. It doesn't matter, I mean, what I'm saying is, we just keep overlapping this thing.
Town Manager?
We'll have a second meeting in October, so perhaps I'll have a better idea. If we have to overlap it, we could extend it again at that October meeting, and if she has, we'll extend it another month, thirty days.
Thank you.
Trying to do it on a month-to-month, because they do have a month-to-month agreement with us.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-eight, vote to approve six thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the Wellstorm Incorporated Bridge Fridge, and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's Opera Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Discussion? Mr. Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious as to what is the Wellstorm Incorporated? Somebody from that organization is here?
Yes, they are.
Hi, everybody. So the Wellstorm is a nonprofit organization that started in two thousand twenty-one, and our first program is the Bridge Fridge that's at the Renaissance Medical Group, and you guys helped us fund it.
From December until right now.
Right now. So we were looking for more funding, just because it has increased since the last time we were here. When we put any food into the fridge, it's gone probably that night. So there's a need, and we just want to make sure we continue getting funding for that.
So the Wellstorm, if I could continue, the Wellstorm Incorporated, is it, does it work with a certain group, certain demographic, or does it allow, does it work with everyone?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah.
So at the meeting, I was going over our minutes, and it said that people come and visit the Bridge Fridge, and they don't take a lot of food, but the food is gone in the next morning, so I was wondering what that meant.
So we have cameras there, because we work closely with the Board of Health on it, so we are able to see who goes there, how much food is in there. We also have volunteers that go there twice a day to clean the fridge, so we're able to notice exactly like what's there and what's not, and we also take pictures of what's inside of the fridge, the pantry, and the upright freezer, and we post that on social media, so people know when there's food, and people know when there isn't any in there, and that's how we're able to find out. Do you have anything else?
So the attendance essentially has been approximately just under two hundred until last month, where there was three hundred and twenty-four visits. We're seeing an increase of people communicating about it online, which is increasing the interest to go and visit the food. We're also seeing a lot of food be used by families, many of them have more than five people because of the housing situation. There's many adults living in the houses together, as well as disabled residential facilities accessing it as well.
And we do ask for demographics, too. We have paper that we provide there, and they're able to put it in a locked container that we provide, and they also, we also have a QR code where they could also do it online, so we could keep the demographics going.
We see about twenty percent demographic reporting on like a voluntary basis, essentially, just to kind of keep the concept of like no questions asked, and come get food as you need without any like reprimands or any kind of feelings of strictness.
So the food is getting to the people, it's not just disappearing?
Yeah, it's going to families or individuals around town, yeah. And individuals that can't come because of the location, we're actually working with the YMCA and the Board of Health to try to do one in the center of town, just because a lot of people with transportation issues are having issues getting all the way to the Renaissance Medical Group. So we're also working with other partnerships so we could get more food into the fridges more often, just because we see the need, so we're trying to make more partnerships to cover that.
And it being located right outside the Renaissance Medical Group, which is the Adult Day Health, which does cater to lower-income people of Hispanic heritage, so that's something that we're definitely seeing them access the fridge during the day hours as well, and being located right next to the low-income housing in the village, people come over there, and we also have community members who volunteer to like bring like bags of food when they are there to other like homebound individuals, and that's something that's like strictly volunteer, not even part of our program, so it's something that we're seeing a lot of people getting involved and wanting to participate, and we are very dedicated to like food rescue and preventing waste. We would rather have free food, but because of the resources and the need, it's pretty bare, and we're not able to get food resources on a reoccurring basis very easily. One of the biggest food rescues that we did was actually on September eighth, that there was a power outage in Acton, and the Trader Joe's donated like hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of items to like free food services all throughout Worcester County, and we were able to go and rescue hundreds of items of food, and that food was gone within a day and a half, and the fridge was stuffed full with so many good things that people can't usually get from Trader Joe's.
Thank you.
And we are one hundred percent volunteer-run, by the way, just wanted to mention that, we're not in it for money, we're doing this, you know, volunteer.
Like we invested the seed funds to start it, to be fair.
We did.
On social work salaries.
Thank you.
Which is very limited.
Thank you very much. Counselor Shenier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity to talk to these ladies, I've also had the opportunity to talk to the Catholic Charities and also St. John's Food Bank. If you don't think there's a food insecurity in this community, just go speak with those people. The difficulties that they're having raising funds and being able to supply the food to the people is getting difficult, and I fully support this, this is going to, I think, the third time.
That we formally addressed, I believe so?
It is.
Yes, and it's a well, something that the community is doing and the town's doing is well worth what we're spending, and again, I'll support that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rivas?
Thank you both for your continued commitment to the fridge. I was fortunate enough to help out that night and seeing sort of like instantly, and I have seen a lot more chatter on social media, you know, kind of sending, referring people to the fridge, and I do think I agree with Counselor Shenier, there is an incredible amount of need in our community, and anytime that we can support continued services in this way for all of our community, and hopefully the expansion of the fridge to the center of town, I think that will be crucial for a lot of people that don't, aren't able to get to RMG. I think it is really important for us to continue to support these services, and as we see the increase in numbers of people coming to the fridge, so thank you.
Sorry, can I add one more thing? So I also wanted to make a point that we do not take the funds lightly. With couponing and trying to get the best deals, especially from Shaw's and Rewards Points, I'm able to get one hundred and eighty to two hundred and thirty items with two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's what we're using to fill the fridge each week, and that goes, and that's something that not even like most family homes can do right now with two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Moving on to twenty-nine, vote to approve fifty-five thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the Town Hall Digital Sign Project, and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's Opera Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you. I think this went through ARPA.
Yeah, they've all gone through ARPA, so it's a two-to-one vote.
And I'm the only one who voted no, only because I think that I'd like to see the funding go into the town hall. This building is in need of repair, and just to put a digital sign, it's literally putting a front on this building, which if we could have a bill, some sort of a building facility fund, that's where I would rather see the money go. So the other thing is, I also think it's a pretty busy intersection out there, cars flying back and forth out in front of this town hall, and to have another distraction out there, I didn't think it was a good idea, so I'd be voting no. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Shenier?
Oh, wait, Counselor Adams, go first.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, Dan and the health department's been working on this for quite some time, and I, you know, I look at the signs that we have within the town itself, and the one out front here just says Town of Southbridge, and it's falling apart. The one over at the Rotary is falling apart. The fact is, there's a lot of towns that actually have these signs up, they're built, they're already there, it's proven work, I mean, it's something, it's constant communication with the town, it's telling us when events are happening, if there's, we don't have to depend on those old antiquated signs that we have out there, vote today kind of a thing, and this is where it's located. This is actually, Mr. Waziek wants to look at the six millimeter instead of the ten millimeter, which is a little bit more money, but the fact is, the quality is much higher. I work in the town of Oxford part-time, there's right on Main Street, nobody's getting accidents. You know where they're getting accidents is the islands that they put in the middle of the road, and that's where it's happening. Charlton has theirs right there as well, and many, many towns are in the same way. I thought about, thinking about putting it over at the Rotary, but there probably would be some accidents that happen there. Probably right out here in front of the town hall is the best place that we can put it. We have the electrical box that's already set, everything, he's done all of his homework. I'm assuming he's worked with Rich over at the DPW as well, but, you know, it's time for the town to get into the little 21st century about that stuff and communicate with the public a little bit more. Thank you.
Counselor Shenier?
Just to repeat kind of what Counselor Adams has said, the health director came to the meeting and felt the importance of having this sign and making notifications of the public for many, many of things. He talked about, we wish he had it when COVID was going on and notifications were being done. If you look all over the tri-community, you look over in Central Mass, it's used, it's a useful tool, and I think it's time for us to be able to do that, and I'm going to support this tonight.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, eight to one. Excuse me, seven, seven to one. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Thirty, vote to approve fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to extend the ARPA administrative position to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and the distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's Opera Administrator and the Town Accountant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it was three to zero in favor of just extends that position out, not the individual, but that position out to two thousand twenty-five. We also asked the Town Accountant to maybe start working with the Town Manager for that position for the following year, just as a reminder, those ARPA funds go away December of two thousand twenty-six. I'm assuming there's a lot of federal documentation, even after that period of time, that I have to take a look at, but that was something that Karen and I talked about extensively before, just to say, where are we at? How do we keep that position open and running? You know, the town council could take it over, but I tell you, there's a lot of, the town manager can take it over, there's a lot of federal paperwork she is doing and keeping track of it, so I think it's very important that we keep this position.
Town Manager?
Thank you to you. Just to caveat off what Counselor Adams says, when you review the audits and the management letters, grant management is one of the strongest things that we get criticized for, not just us, but any community, and make sure that we follow the federal regulations, so he is right on that, and we don't have the staff right now to be able to do that, even in the accountant staff, so I agree with that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Thirty-one, vote to approve five thousand dollars in ARPA funds for Opakum Lee and Trust in the trees, for tree planting assistance, and the distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's Opera Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shenier. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is three to zero as well. This, Mr. Brady had approached the Town Manager quite some time ago, and then he came to the meeting the other day. Obviously, we all know that we, those thousand trees granted to us here by the U.S. Forest Service, I believe it was, a few years back, these, what Mr. Brady had explained, some of these trees are not ones you just carry around and plant, you know, they're in your back pocket, they're big and heavy, and he also explained some of the things underneath the power lines as well, of the type of trees, because he's an arborist, and I think, I'm assuming, I think you said you do are, but that being said, making sure that it'll grow, you know, to a certain height, and then there's a lot more trees that need to be planted around this town, and they do need the help, and this will go for mechanical help as far as diggers and stuff like that, that's all, that's all I got.
Mr. Brady, would you like to comment?
Sure. So you've probably noticed some of the public trees that we've planted along Main Street, Marcy Street, and there's along Dresser Street and Commercial Street at the intersection, so those are the public trees. We also plant private trees. The goal is, originally was to have a thousand trees planted in the communities of Southbridge and Ware. For our community, you know, we're going along. For our community, you know, we're going along and when we have public trees, it is very helpful to have mechanical assistance so that we can get the holes dug and get the trees in the ground as quickly as possible to minimize any disturbance to any kind of traffic, foot traffic or, or car traffic. So what we usually do is we contract out to a subcontractor who has the equipment to actually do the job. Now, that costs a little bit above what our budget normally is. So the Town Manager, Mr. Jovan, was nice enough to suggest that I look for ARPA funds to do that. So that's what I, that's what I've done. Thank you.
Sounds good. Any questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much for your service, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to 32. Vote to approve $20,287.48 in ARPA funds to purchase voting booth stations and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's ARPA Administrator.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Adams, seconded by Shania. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, it came from the Town Clerk. The voting booths that they're, she's looking for is 20 of them. She explained that they are running out of pieces to put those tables, those booths together. DPW highly recommend that they look for some new ones. They can't keep banditing everything. So she put their request in for this amount of money and it was three to zero. Favor of?
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 33. Vote to approve $48,000 in ARPA money, ARPA funds for catering services, for weekly senior luncheons put on by the Council on Aging Director and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's ARPA Administrator.
Sub move.
Motion by Shania?
Second.
Seconded by Adams. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I did vote for this. I will vote for it again, but looking at the actual caterers on the job, I saw that two of them were from out of, one was out of town, the other one was out of state. And I know that we have a lot of restaurants in Southbridge. I'd like to see if we could keep the catering here in Southbridge. And I don't know if they're all doing catering, but I think we should at least try. Elm Center, I think he does some catering. Thins and Tails, I know Central Pizza is on, is on the list. There's also Golden Greek. Like I said, I don't know if they all do catering, but I would like us to try at least keep the funding here in Southbridge. And this is ARPA money for Southbridge. So, thank you.
Town Manager, did he vote first? Did Counsel Adams?
Through you. I believe that's just because we have to go up for quotes for a certain dollar threshold. So she seeks quotes. We would certainly prefer to use local vendors. But in order to get quotes, you'd call around to try to get as many quotes as you can to satisfy procurement procedures. So.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we all agree with that, what Counsel Marketti had brought up just a few seconds ago. Just for Katie, Katie had brought this to Counsel Shania and my attention. We sat down one day, had a conversation about before the Town Manager came on board. And this really is while, hopefully we rebuild that senior center right there in the kitchen and all that kind of stuff, this will be able to give meals to our seniors. And though it says up to 100, I've never seen up to 100, but, but this could take the senior center out two years of food substance. So for our seniors who really do need it. So we formulated a plan and Katie did it, did all the legwork and I appreciate all the hard work she did. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Rivas?
Just a question. I know that the seniors got charged kind of a minimal fee for the daily lunch. And so how will this be offset? Like for the weekly luncheon, will they not pay?
So, Mr. Chair, I can ask that real quick.
Can I ask her to come up?
Absolutely.
Katie, could you come up, please? Say your name and address.
Oh, Kathleen Elise Tilton, 82 Tilly Rav. So what the plan was, was to continue charging $5, but this would help offset the price because obviously like I did also reach out to Jeremy at Elm Center, but by the time he got the quote to me, we had already had our meeting and all that stuff. So I just kind of grabbed whatever information quickly that I could to get it here so we can get the ball rolling. So the, a plan would be to continue charging $5. So then this way down the road, when the funds do run out and we do continue to have luncheons, we can still, still charge $5. They'll be used to doing that. And a lot of, like, the social aspect, like I know, like Jack came to the last one that we just had. It was a great social event. The seniors can get together and be around, make new friends, see old friends that they haven't seen in a while. A lot of them do take transportation to get there. So it's nice for them to be able to have a central location for them to get together and mingle, have a good time and leave with a full belly.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 34. Vote to approve $5,000 in ARPA funds to purchase paint and other needed supplies to help modernize the senior room, senior center room and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's ARPA Administrator.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Counsel Adams?
Yeah, it was three to zero. Again, this is obviously just an upgrade inside the senior center. If you look at it, it looks like an armory and maybe we can beautify it up a little bit.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 35. Vote to approve the purchase of a Volvo I770H wheel loader in the amount of $194,219 funded through ARPA and the distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's ARPA Administrator.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Counsel?
It was three to zero in favor of moving this forward, but I refer to Town Manager.
Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This had come through DPW Subcommittee first about DPW Director Benoit had come forward with the issues with the loader that is used to move salt and, and seeking monies, it was either capital or this wheel loader. This is on a municipal bid list. This vehicle is available and we would be able to take delivery relatively soon. The alternative was us to rent a vehicle if we had to rent one over the winter months, which would cost another additional 48 to 60,000 plus the lead time on any other unit. So I commend Rich for looking for this vehicle. Volvos are used on the, in the department as well. He's very confident that this would serve the purpose for our town. Recommend funding that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to six. Vote to approve an extension to the CDBG FY 2000 grant to December 31, 2023 to allow more time for the playground equipment to be delivered and installed and authorize Town Manager to sign any related documents.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shania. Town Manager?
This happens often when it comes to CDBG. We're just looking for extensions so that we can use as much money as we can and anticipate getting this project completed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So this is the second extension we've had on this. On March, we had an extension from June 30th to September 20th. So now we're extending it to December. I don't know. I don't think we're going to get the playground equipment installed in December. So I foresee a third extension coming on this. All right? Does that sound right?
Could be possible, but we'll do everything in our power to make sure that it's installed.
All right.
Just Town Manager, what's the opposite? Lose the grant? The, I mean, if we don't do it, what's the option?
No, we want to do it because we can extend the grant again if we had to. Our goal is to complete this project in McMahon Fields and have that area under and totally completed so that, and we then can move to another area in town such as Morris Street. So if we have to extend it, we extend it. But our goal is to complete this project so that everybody can enjoy it. And I commend Ms. Dean for continuing on that path to make sure that it's completed.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all, were you opposed or in favor?
Not in favor.
Okay, unanimously in favor. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 37. Vote to approve applying for the Making It Public for Massachusetts Municipality's 2024 application for up to $15,000 to fund public art incentives in Southbridge and authorize Town Manager to sign any related documents.
Sub move.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Town Manager?
Thank you. Counsel Daniel was not here tonight, but it did go through his Subcommittee and was passed unanimously to bring forward. If there's any questions, I'll refer to Ms. Dean.
Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 38. Vote to approve memorandum of agreement with the Mass DOT Grant Program for the Acceptance of the Dynamic Radar Speed Feedback Mini Trailer to utilize, to be utilized and maintained as per agreement by the Department of Public Works and authorize Town Manager to sign all required documents.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Counsel Shania?
This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Recommended unanimously by Sub? PPP? Any other discussion? No discussion?
What is this?
So it is, it is one of those mobile speed signs that give you feedback as to the speed. So it'll set a speed limit on that roadway and then it'll give feedback. And given the parameters of the grant that was Mr. DPW Director Benoit provided, there is a certain road that I believe we have to do it to give the feedback on. And then we would have the ability to move that anywhere in town. Right now, we have some that are fixed mount. This would be on a trailer that could be moved in different locations to educate the public as to speed and make sure that we keep our roads safe.
Any further discussion?
I believe this went through DPW Subcommittee. It was voted unanimously. Thank you. And it's, it doesn't cost local taxpayer.
No, sorry about that, Counsel.
No, you do, oh, good.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 39. Vote to accept FEMA FY 24 Brick DTA Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Technical Assistance and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Bon Tigny, seconded by Shania.
Mr. Chairman?
Put the PPP?
This went to PPP and it was unanimously approved by all present. And I gotta stress that in this particular grant, it's not money, but we're the only town and city in the state of Massachusetts that is getting this hazard mitigation plan. And the chief's here, that's he needed.
Any further discussion?
Just an explanation as to what this is. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, Council members?
Chief?
Good evening. This, I'll give you a full explanation. I'll read what was presented at the meeting. This past winter, I applied for a MEMA and a FEMA grant to start the process of rewriting our current hazard mitigation plan. I was awarded the grant, the MEMA grant, but after a full review, there was no actual assistance for me or my staff to rewrite the plan. We would have to, have to do many man hours and do it ourselves. At the same time, around the time of May 19, 2023, FEMA announced that I had, had gotten the grant as what was said here earlier by, by Chairman, I mean, from the Council in regards to having us being one of the only communities in Massachusetts, but three in the entire state of, I mean, New England area. This was a very competitive grant process and I'm very grateful to have been, have been chosen for this. I'm very proud of this. The FEMA Brick Grant for Communities, Tribes, Territories Assistance can provide holistic hazard mitigation, climate resilience, planning and, and project support for the earliest stages to completion of the project. The efforts are to reduce disaster damage, build community resilience, and sustain successful mitigation programs. During this process, MEMA will engage with each community to further assess the community's need for non-financial technical assistance and identify an action plan. This wide-ranging support includes climate risk assessment, community engagement, partnership building, mitigation, climate adaption, and planning. There are some required signatures on the MOU that I've provided and it is clearly stated in the approval after tonight that the Town Manager will sign appropriate, all appropriate documents. There is no cost to the town of Southbridge. With accepting this grant, FEMA will provide support to selected, to our community for up to 36 months. Obviously, at our PPP Subcommittee meeting last week, Brendan Lynch, who is our delegate from FEMA, he put together a short PowerPoint presentation, which was presented at that time. And also I forwarded it to all of you guys tonight for your review. I would like to, what we do kind of need out of this grant as we finalize it and move it forward if possible, I would like to identify a member from the Town Council and someone particularly from the Subcommittee, someone that's involved in, in the, the decision-making in the town politics to be part of the workshop that will start the review process of this award. Along, along with accepting and allowing the Town Manager Jovan to sign the documents, that's pretty much what it is. I'm very proud of this. This is, this is one, one, one town in the whole state of Massachusetts that got it.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any other discussion? Questions, Chief? If there are none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Moving on to 40. Vote to award the Contract for MPC Services Incorporated to provide HVAC system and control maintenance for various town buildings and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
Sub move.
Is there a motion by Bon Tigny, seconded by Adams?
Unanimous of all present at the DPW meeting.
Unanimous of all present. DPW recommendation? Comment, Mr. Town Man, Mr. Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Usually that come every year was a amount. Is that the same thing? Like we're paying somebody 30, 30 something plus thousand and not seeing him here? And every time we call him, he come and charge us extra? Is that the same thing?
This is a different contractor than previous contractors. So this is a new, new vendor that we have that went out to bid by, it's a service contract. So they're gonna plan maintenance in the servicing of our units. And with that, it always comes that if there's something breaks, they do, you know, if it's unanticipated, we do have to pay them for that work that they do. But this is system servicing and maintenance, I believe.
So, so now by signing this contract, are we giving them any money? Just to say hello, shake my hand, 30,000?
No, they're gonna be coming, they're gonna perform duties to the town and that will be overseen by the DPW Director.
Because in the past, we have a, I know this is different contractor, but in the past, we're giving 30 plus thousand to somebody, just sit behind the phone and call him, say, hi, can you come fix the, whatever go bad? And then we have to pay him extra for coming in and pay him to fix it. So what's the point is to sign contract and give him 30 plus thousand and you still have to pay him for coming in here for service and repair, whatever they're gonna do.
I want to say the difference is we have a new DPW Director that has a lot of oversight in his department to make sure that these vendors do perform the work that is required. So we would see how it goes. This is a one-year contract. We'll make sure that they have performed the duties that they're supposed to perform. If they don't, then we'll seek a different alternative.
So what, what we're giving them right now for a amount?
It's $31,000. Each building that they work and service is articulated in this agreement on the sheet. It's every building that they will, that's what it's gonna cost.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. A service contract is, they actually come in and do filters, flushing, and various services to each unit. And that's part of, we don't pay any, anything for that. It's part of the service contract. If there's any extended work that is above and beyond the service contract, then we pay for it.
So, so they do gonna do some work for the money given them?
Yes. All filters, all fan belts, all the cooling has to be checked.
In the past, that other company, they never came in here. And every time they come here, they used to build the town a lot of money. So I just want to make sure we earn those money we're giving.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be, it's the $31,000. I completely understand, Counsel Dow, where you're coming from. I actually explained that to the-
I actually explained that to Mr. Benoit as well and how it worked, and it actually went to the Subcommittee once, came back a second time, just to make sure there's clarification. Plus, you don't see airports, so Mr. Benoit did a great job, and he made it very clear, because that, that the PMing of these, these HVAC systems and all that kinda stuff need to happen, they will be happening, and they'll, they'll be accountable for them. And then at the bottom, you'll see the hourly rates if they have to do, if they do have to come in outside of that area.
So, Chair, one more thing. Thank you, Chair. So they will have a record, what building they changed, the filter in the bill, they will, every time they do something through the contract, they will have a record of it?
Council Dow, from my past experience, you PM that thing, you write it down what you did, you took a look at it, you changed that filter, it should be annotated down on a piece of paper or a software system, and that way, the DPW Director and, or his, his men can take a look at that and make sure it's all done properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
And I know the question came up at the last council when we first went through this. This will be effective one year from ratification tonight, so it won't go back to July first because there was no servicing, so it'll come from the date of this vote, vote, one year.
Counsel Rivas?
Just a quick question to follow up on Counselor Dow's. In the contract itself, the details that you mentioned for services, is that delineated? Because it's not on here. I just wanna make sure that's written down somewhere.
This is Chair, just real quick. There was, there was a contract to this thing. I don't know what happened to it, but there was, I actually had to look even at the DPW one to forth for the contract. I do know there was one provided, it just didn't make it to this packet, but there is one out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, in the past package, they do have a detail, what building was done, yes.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you. This may have been mentioned at the meeting, but I'm gonna ask it. Why is the airport being removed from the contract? I mean, I went back and looked at the lease agreement with the airport diner, and I couldn't find anything that the airport diner is responsible for the, for the HVAC in that place. It could be that there is one, but when we voted on it on August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, I didn't see anything about them being responsible. It could be, just was curious. And also, I did look at the two thousand twenty agreement, if you want that. I can give you a copy. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
I'll follow up on it, but my, my assumption is gonna be the Airport Commission runs the airport, so they may have their own agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that was also, not, I'm sorry. He did get, I believe he got with Mr. Clements as well to make sure everything was, he opened up, and it was asked at that, I mean, that's why I came back a second time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? None, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Moving on to Forty-One. Vote to approve Piapi Construction, the Gulfwood Road Project from Tory Road heading northeast to its
Turnus.
Turnus at the swamp in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, utilizing Chapter Ninety funds, using price quantities extended from prior year's contract, and completing work before cold weather, sets in the, and have the town manager sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya. ABW?
Unanimous, unanimously recommended to, to the town council.
Unanimous recommendation? Any discussion? Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I just wanna say thank you for Mr. Benoit and Mr. Piapi doing a great job on, in that area, the whole area, and they're doing it fast. I know there was lowdown a little bit regarding some issue with the payment, but now they finished Ellis Road, looks very nice, and hopefully the second project you're doing up there will make all the residents happy as well. Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I just wanna say that I really, I think Mr. Piapi's doing an excellent job up there on Ellis Road. I'm really, I like what I'm seeing, like to see him finish that. I also think Gulfwood Road does need work. I've always thought that that road is in pretty bad shape as well. But I have had some calls from some constituents about this project. A couple of them, we haven't voted on it yet, and the work has already started on Gulfwood Road, and they wanted to know if the Gulfwood Road Project had been bid on. Now, I did talk to the town manager about it. He did explain to me that the DPW Director got permission from Mass DOT to combine Ellis Road with Gulfwood Road and make it one project. Ellis Road was not a, using Chapter Ninety funds, Ellis Road was not using Chapter Ninety funds, and I'm not quite sure how that works anyway, if you don't have to put something out to bid just because it's Chapter Ninety. I don't really know how that works. But I will, I will just say this, that if he talked to somebody in Mass DOT, he'd like to know who he talked to, and did they put something like that in writing? And that's the only questions that I have for that right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. I think the reason why, because you get the intersection, and that why they're doing Ellis Road cross to that and did a lot of damage on that area, so that's why probably DOT authorized it to be finished. Thank you, Chair.
Counsel Rivas?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Benoit, for all of the quick work on these projects. I do, you know, I hope that we get to some of the other roads in our town, like Hamilton Street is a main thoroughfare, we have businesses there, we have a lot of residents on those main roads, and so hopefully, some of those roads are coming up on the project plans soon. Thank you.
I think Mr. Benoit has the, if I may, on, on some information. Mr. Benoit has tackled a lot of different projects that he got hit with immediately, and he also wants to get everything done to a certain cut line for the cold weather, only to open up in the spring with a new batch of roads. Right now, we have South Street, West Street, Gulfwood Road. I mean, we're getting some roads done in Southbridge, and we gotta continue, and there are all the parts of town that, you know, are in rough shape, but those were the two worst roads in Southbridge, though. I think Denison Hill and Mechanic Street, I mean, there are a lot of them in there. Town Manager?
Thank you, through you. Just as a point of clarification, the agreement was to allow us to use Chapter Ninety money for the Gulfwood Road. It had nothing to do with Ellis Road with Chapter Ninety monies, it was just the ability to use Chapter Ninety. The approval was to use those funds for Gulfwood and to utilize the prior year's contract in regards to that. I'll definitely get you the, the name if you need it. In regards to Hamilton Street, at our next meeting, Ms. Dean will articulate what has occurred in some grants. We had an opportunity, and she'll explain the raise grant for Hamilton Street, which was a nine mil, nine-point-nine million dollar project, and she'll let the town council know how that went and where, how far off it went in the Department of Transportation and our ability to rebid that, or resubmit, and we'll talk about that at the next council meeting. But Hamilton Street, we were very close to getting nine-point-nine million dollars to redo Hamilton Street from one end to where we're doing the TIP project.
Rich, with all due respect, can we focus on the Agenda Item of Gulfwood Road and Ellis?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just wanna answer a brief question about how we came about doing this. So, the, the request through Mass DOT was to utilize Chapter Ninety funding to make the necessary repairs to Gulfwood Road. The, the means of getting there without going out to bid is basically a contract extension based off of last year's paving contract without any inflated cost. We're utilizing quantities and numbers under last year's contract without, with, with cost control, using last year's numbers, which would be cheaper than this year's numbers. So that is, that is how we could get away with doing that at this moment in time.
Any questions at this time? Counsel Rivas?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I don't think it's any of the council's business on who was contacted at DOT and who Rich got in touch with. I believe that's out of council's purview, because it's like me getting the name and then calling them. I, I don't think we have the authority to act as that, and I don't think it's any of the council's business. I think we have a town manager, we have a DPW Director that handles that part of this stuff, and for council to get involved with it is totally wrong. Thank you.
I think, I think that you're both right. One, it's not council business, and we shouldn't have the name to call DOT. Those days are gone with the last Director. Under the new Director, we go through the town manager, and we go and deal with Rich at a Subcommittee, but moving forward, I think Rich has put forward the best step that we've seen in Southbridge in a long time as far as roads. We hired a road guy finally. Don't get offended by the questions, because, Rich, I mean, they're valid questions.
Absolutely.
But I think you're working magic in the neighborhood, and I think that we're gonna have whiners no matter where that we go, but keep doing it.
If I can add one more thing, so the application process to get approval for a project through Mass DOT has to include all the information about whether you went out to bid or how you're, how you're working, your pricing. So that was part of the acceptance of the project, was they had to review that as well.
But we are, as councilors, not responsible to contact DOT. That's what I think Counsel Shinya's saying.
Okay.
I think we should leave that up to the management. Counsel Mark Hattie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the last time I checked, my taxes went to pay Mass DOT, so I think we can ask all kinds of questions about Mass DOT, in my opinion. The question is, did Gulfwood Road go out to bid? And I guess the answer is, it did not go out to bid. We never put Gulfwood Road up to bid at all. We didn't put it up to bid last year, wasn't part of the road project last year, so I don't know how it became part of this year's project. Believe me, I want Gulfwood Road done.
No, I agree. It was my understanding, if I may, it was my understanding that Gulfwood Road was actually on the list of roads to be done within prior years, that the funding was moved
Before us.
From that road to do other roads. Actually, I believe the funding went to Mechanic and North Street, which then we just bypassed because of the national grid situation. So I was basically, my intention to fix a large problem in that area, also to help with the diversion and traffic calming with having Ellis Road recently paved and not allowing that road to accept all of the pass-through traffic, so now at least we will have that as an additional measure of traffic control for the neighborhood with traffic coming in from out of town, with also the understanding of the fact that that road was in absolute horrible condition, as with many other roads in town that we're looking at. But we were there, we had the opportunity to take advantage, and we're getting it done.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Technically, every road in Southbridge deserve to be looked at and, and fixed. We're not picking and choose. The equipment was on Ellis Road, the contractor was theirs, the work was continued, they did some, a lot of damage on the end destruction, and I think the best decision you guys make, just do the whole road, because the citizen and the resident, they deserve better road for their vehicle and the travel to go home at night after a long day work. So we here sitting and fighting which road is gonna be done, we need to do them all. I agree with every council. We can't leave any road behind, and thank you for, for the work and everything you do. Finally, we have something done, and we see some project is moving forward faster than before. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Adams?
Who's the question?
Can most move the question?
Second.
They're seconded by Shinya. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed?
Two opposed.
Two opposed, who's the two?
Dow and
Oh, Counsel Dow? Motion passes to move the question. All, all those in favor on the question number thirty? Forty-one?
Forty-one.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present?
Mark Hattie, no.
One?
One.
One, no. What a surprise. Okay, moving on to Forty-Two. Vote to approve FY Twenty-Four Treatment Sodium Chloride Road Salt Contract with the Lead Salt with contracted price of ninety-four dollars and seventy cents per ton pursuant to the existing Oxford Cooperative Bid and the authorization for the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Adams, seconded by Shinya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is, I, I obviously was recommended in favor of, this is the cooperative with Oxford. We did this a few years ago, get the cheaper price in the, in the cooperative, and this also gives an option for, I think it is two one-year options for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five.
Any discussion on the salt contract?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. What was the price like here? If you don't mind us. Anybody know?
Sixty-eight, I think. Sixty-eight dollars.
Rich?
Same price.
Place of salt last year?
What's that?
What was the place last year?
I believe the price is the same, actually. They're carrying the same price.
Is it the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job.
And thirty cents cheaper than the state.
Thirty cents cheaper than the state bid. Good numbers. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present. Moving on to Forty-Three. Vote to approve FY Twenty-Four Untreated Road Salt Contract to Eastern Salt Company at sixty-eight dollars per ton pursuant to the state bid list and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
The motion, second, motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, at DPW. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present. Moving on to Forty-four. Vote to approve the change order for one hundred and seventy-three thousand to VHB's Design Contract for the TIP Project six-zero-eight-seven-seven-eight to complete the right-of-way work for TIP number six-zero-eight-seven-seven-eight and TIP six-zero-seven-seven-six-two using funding raised at the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two council meeting for TIP's construction phase and row acquisition costs Hook and Hamilton and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved. Motion by
Dow.
Motion by Dow, seconded by
Me?
Montigny? ABW recommendation?
Unanimous, in favor of.
Unanimous, of all present. Discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As I said at the Subcommittee level, I understand the need for, to have this done. I just, my problem is with VHB. They provided oversight on Main Street. I think Counsel Shinya provided better oversight on Main Street than VHB. They also provided a punch list on Main Street, and as far as I know, Lynch has not come back and finished that punch list. So my problem is with VHB. They don't provide good oversight, and that's what their job is here on this project, is to provide oversight. I think we could have someone else do this as easily, so I'm voting no. Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Town Manager?
I thank Ms. Dean for bringing VHB to the table. We had a good conversation at the DPW Subcommittee meeting. This is not oversight, this is design.
Okay. It's oversight.
It's design and to assist in the acquisition and the easements, which is desperately needed so that we can move these projects forward.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the questions that I did ask, because I was kinda upset with VHB also, but VHB was clear and specific to say this was nothing to do with oversight, this was designed, if I'm correct, Ms. Dean, and that the state was gonna be responsible for the oversight. Am I correct on that also? So this is for design and not for oversight of the project. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven-one. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Forty-Five. Vote to approve change order for one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to McClure Design Contract on East Main Street for the K Street to the Rotary and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Counsel Adams?
Unanimous, recommended to the town council, in favor of. Just, this is where McClure changed the design. It's gonna, that sidewalk will be located on the
Non- river side.
South side of the river, south side of the, the, the Main Street. So they, they performed, Ms. Dean did an awesome job getting this taken care of for us. It was one of our concerns, bit, major concerns and from multiple councilors, and came back, and they knocked out the park, and they provided the design, and here we are now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel?
So, my only question through you, Mr. Chairman, did we get a, an answer on what this is coming from? Because when I, as I said, I looked at the Subcommittee meeting, when this East Main Street came up, the sidewalks are being paid for by the Mass Works Grant. It was said at the meeting that the Mass Works Grant went towards Big Y, this is towards the Rotary, so I'm just questioning whether or not we got that straightened out, where the funding is coming from. Thank you.
Town Manager?
I'll let Peg explain that, but I, I thought it was reversed, that Mass Works was the, from K Street to the Rotary was Mass Works. That was what was explained in the DPW
That was what was explained in the DPW Subcommittee. And that the other funding was gonna be the town funding from that, plus the water main. So there was water main work that we were looking at, and that the funding for that portion, and I had a meeting with DPW Director Benoit today to take a look at what funding we're looking at for that, and some of the monies that we may have in some other projects, we're gonna determine whether those, where that, in my evaluation of some of the capital projects, we had money assigned to South Street project and West Street project, we're gonna confirm whether those monies, where they went to. So we're working on that funding mechanism.
But the question in front of us...
Plus, the Mass Works was from the other end.
So did you get your answer on where this came from?
No, because I think I watched, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Where did one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars come from? Here's the question. Peg?
The, this portion comes from Mass Works grant. I did go back to the November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, thank you for sending the link to me. Councilman Ray Cady, I did look for it on the cable channel and I couldn't find it until I opened up View All. So you go back to that meeting, you're absolutely right, he does say, Greg Russell from VHB says, from K Street East, they'll cover the sidewalks. And so today, just as an assurance that we're all on the same page, I pulled in VHB and McClure with Rich and Steve Gregoire to make sure that everyone's understanding what the scope was, what the scope is. And so the reason Greg initially said that was because his scope was, it was initially narrower, it was just sort of the, in front of K Street, in front of the property. And so what we went and did was, Rich, when he came on, said, what's the phrase, the no orphaned roads?
Orphaned roads, yes.
Yes, and so, early on, when we started talking about the Mass Works, he'd said, you know, we're not gonna do this segment and not complete it to the Rotary, that doesn't make sense financially. And so that's why we initially, we started to change the scope immediately to include up to the Rotary, and that's when we took in all the councilors' feedback to try to move the shared path to the other side of the street. I hope that explains your, or explains why we came from that November meeting to today.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you, Peg. Moving on to forty-six, vote to approve change order to Guardian contract, Guardian's contract for four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars using town council reserve account zero zero one one three two five seven eight one zero zero and an extension to the contract of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, after discovering the softball light poles are currently not grounded, and the authorization of the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved. Second. Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, unanimously in favor of coming up to the town council for approval. The motion explains it all.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number forty-seven, vote to authorize the town manager to seek a request for proposal of services for an assessment center for an upcoming lieutenant position in the fire department. So moved. Second. Motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. Counsel Shania, recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, this was recommended by the Subcommittee unanimously, and this is just following through with Counselor's directive from a few years ago.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to forty-eight, vote to transfer forty-five thousand dollars from Capital Stabilization Fund, zero eight four two, to Capital Stabilization Town Manager's vehicle, four zero 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 zero, four nine six, seven zero zero, six four, one two three, four eight, two thousand twenty-three Ford PIU administrative vehicle. So moved.
Second.
Is a motion by Shania, seconded by Montigny? Any discussion by council? Counsel MacDenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tru You. I believe this is gonna take a two-thirds vote, removing capital stabilization money out.
Yes, correct. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to forty-nine, vote to approve the town manager's transfer request of fifty-one dollars from zero zero one 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 one, five seven eight zero 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 miscellaneous expenses to zero zero one one, one one, five seven three, zero 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 dues, sub to cover MMA subscription renewal. Entertained a motion to council to recommend approval. So moved. Second. There's a motion by Shania, seconded by Dow. General Government?
It was recommended unanimously. I think that might be worded a little wrong at the end there, but it was recommended
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Fifty, vote to approve town manager's request to transfer one thousand one hundred dollars from zero zero one one three two, five seven eight one, zero zero Town Council Reserve to zero zero one one, two three, five three, one zero zero Advertising and Promotions to ensure funds for available to cover invoices for FY twenty-four and to process a remaining balance of a pending unpaid FY twenty-three invoice. So moved. Second. In motion and a second. Motion by Shania, seconded by Montigny.
It was also recommended unanimously.
Vote was unanimous from General Government to recommend. Confirmation, town manager?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, because there was a question that occurred at the meeting, it was voted to come up, as long as I had the information for this. So this is what occurred, so, you know, this fifty and fifty-one are related. So what it was is, the town accountant had encumbered monies for a bill for Stonebridge Press. There was not enough money in that encumbrance to pay that bill, so we're gonna need to pay that bill out of FY twenty-four funds. So in order to make sure that we're able to cover the unpaid bill in the next item, we're gonna transfer eleven hundred dollars to pay that unpaid bill, as well as make sure we have enough money left in that account for the rest of the year.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So would this be a two-thirds vote, because... This item is not a two-thirds vote, the next one would be.
Okay.
Because all we're doing in this item, we're transferring FY twenty-four council reserve to FY twenty-four advertising account. So it's within the same year. So we're not transferring. The next item is paying an unpaid bill, which would require a two-thirds.
Got it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to fifty-one, vote to pay an unpaid bill FY two thousand twenty-three invoice of Stonebridge Press, PO two zero two three, three three, three four, invoice dated six thirty twenty-three, in the amount of one thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents from FY twenty-four budget line item, zero zero one one, two three, five three four, one zero zero Advertising and Promotions. Vote is required, two-thirds. Clear motion? So moved. Second. Motion by Shania, seconded by Adams. Any discussion?
It's also unanimous recommendation.
Unanimous from General Government? No further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to fifty-two, vote to approve the transfer of the CDBG FY twenty-four D code enforcement to six C Parks and Playgrounds to allow the town to hire Fontaine Masonry to complete the last of the McCann Field upgrades and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shania. Discussion? Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to make a motion to amend this state or to insert of eighty-one hundred dollars after transfer, so that state vote to approve a transfer of eighty-one hundred dollars from CDBG FY twenty, just to clarify how much money there is in there, or they're requesting.
Eighty-one thousand?
Eighty-one hundred.
Eighty-one hundred. So there's amendment on the floor to add eighty-one, eight thousand one hundred dollars into the motion?
Second.
Motion by Adams, seconded by Montigny. Discussion on the amendment? If there is no amendment, no discussion on amendment, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. The main motion has amended. Any discussion? Counsel MacDenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tru You. Back in May, at the P and D meeting, we voted to reuse remaining grant funds, nine thousand dollars on change order number seven. That was to pour concrete, and it was stated at the meeting that we'd be going out to bid Benoit, De Petro, or Fontaine. Is this in addition to that? Is this another change order? I'm just curious as to what this is.
Peg Dean?
Hi, thank you. This is work that was initially agreed to with the DPW to be completed. We were using up the last of the grant funds outside of the JAM contract. We had about twenty thousand dollars that we spent on concrete, benches, trash cans, split rail fence, mulch, et cetera, and the DPW was gonna install all of it. So Fontaine laid those concrete pads, and the DPW would then be installing all of this stuff on it. So now, instead of, because we have extra funds in four D, we thought it would be a good use of the money to just let, relieve the DPW of whatever work we can and use some of that money to get this job done.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion by council? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Counsel's Forum, fifty-three, Counsel Rivas.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank the parents and students that came to speak at the last school committee meeting for their comments and their bravery in coming to speak in a public forum. It's very intimidating, and I know that it's difficult for families to come here, especially students. So I encourage students and families to continue showing up to school committee meetings, coming to our community listening sessions, coming here, you know, taking opportunity to call us, write to us, let us know about your experiences in any of our school buildings. We really want to hear from families. I also want to give information about an upcoming event, October seventh, Saturday, at the Ruthwell Center for the Arts, so we, an exhibition called Cast Shadows Vintage Masquerade Party and Opening Reception for C. Tupper, that is the artist, they'll have a solo exhibit there. And I also want to give a quick update from our town manager Substance Abuse Committee or Task Force, that we have a Red Ribbon Resource Fair for families coming up on October twenty-eighth, Saturday, from ten to one PM at the Tri-Community YMCA, and we will have speakers there, we will have activities for, for the kids and for teens and for parents, so stay tuned for more information about that. Thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair Tru You. I just wanna say to the family of Brackett, sorry for the loss, he was a good guy. I did serve with him when I was on the call department. We lost a good guy. And I wanna say thank you for the DPW, for all these rain and cleaning the drainage, keeping, keep the water flow, and the good work they're doing in the town of South Bridge. And town manager, I know you're just tired, thank you for the good work. We can see we're going on the right track and all the council supporting you. Hopefully, we can move South Bridge in the right direction. Thank you.
Counsel Shania?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On social media, the town is attacked quite often about the lack of services or lack of things to do in our community, and most recently during the hurricane, there was some comments said about maybe the town should be blown away. What I find disheartening is these comments from the keyboard warriors. In our community, we had the Autumn Fest that was just recently held, and it was well-supported by this community. The library has programming that goes on all the time. Margaret at the library and her staff does an excellent job. I just recently attended the paranormal talk that she had there, and it was an excellent, excellent presentation. We have the, you know, the Pastor Esteban and his group doing after-school programming. We have after-school programming going on in the school. There's, there's a lot of things that goes on in this community, and if people just paid more attention to the good things, it would help move our town so much further. Also, I like, I was asked to announce that there would be a free medical clinic at the South Bridge Methodist Church at four forty-nine Main Street on the third Tuesday of the month, starting September nineteenth, and that's gonna be featuring a primary care for minor non-threatening, non-life-threatening illnesses and injuries. They also are holding a rock and roll event on September thirtieth at seven PM at the same location, and also at that location, they have Carol's Closet, which they provide free clothing, shoes, hygiene products, and blankets and stuff for men and women and children of all sizes on Fridays, two to six. And also, they do a pizza night on the third Wednesday of the month, and that's all free of charge. And they also do a Rosalina Kitchen, free dinners on Fridays between five and six. And again, Mr. Chairman, I wanna thank you for tonight's meeting, it probably went down a record, fifty-three items, and we're gone before nine-thirty. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny?
Thank you very much. I just have to reiterate again how awesome it is to serve with all of you. It's great to finally see good people getting hired and promoted from within, filling really important positions, the finance department. I'd like to also extend thanks to DPW Director Rich Benoit. You've been doing a great job, and I've just been sitting up here all night smiling because it's just, maybe I'm a South Bridge politics nerd, but I just, this is great for South Bridge, everything that's going on. And as we, you know, stroll down the road to pavement paradise together, we might smell the roses, we'll still find a stick in the mud along the way, apparently. And lastly, I would like to thank, oh, I'm sorry, I would like to wish my father a happy sixty-fifth birthday tomorrow, and his, and his wife, Michelle, my stepmom, a happy first anniversary yesterday. I love you both very much. Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, happy birthday to your father, and happy anniversary to your family. I just wanted to, just get an update from the town manager and the chairs as well, just an update on, not tonight, but the kennel and the building committee, if we can get that pretty soon, and the goals and objectives for the town manager, his contract, that'd be great, I appreciate it. The DPW was brought up tonight, we had a long, extensive conversation, kind of went off the agenda item. Myself, Mr. Benoit, and I believe the town manager will be sitting down to talk about pavement, the pavement management program here in the near future, so we can be prepared for next year, when it comes nice again, weather-wise. The, I'm looking forward to Desi, the commissioner, coming down in the fall to discuss with us and have a conversation, as promised, and I'll be sending him a letter very soon, along with his board, asking them to fulfill their promise by coming down here and thanking them for all their hard work. Also, we, we tend to forget, because we're in receivership, that we also have a lot of our young, young residents, we're going to Bay Path, and they're going through negotiations for contracts since December. So I am really hoping that the teachers and the superintendent can work things out and make sure that they get a contract properly for all the work. They're no longer teachers, just like police and fire, they're more social workers these days, and I just hope, you know, they can ratify a contract very, very soon. We can't forget about that, we have two people on that school board, that would be great to hear from once in a while as well. And lastly, I just wanted to bring up, yesterday was Gold Star Mother's Day, 1.7 million families have been affected over, that are still alive to this day from their sons and daughters being killed in line of duty. And the history states that it used to be a blue star, and then it turned into a gold star. If you, if anyone knows Blue Stars, mothers are those that, their sons or daughters are in the military, and the gold star gets reversed, or turns into a gold star as soon as somebody, their family member passes on in, in the line of duty. So I just wanna thank them for their sacrifice and my condolences to them and all those out there throughout, within our town and our state and our country. So that's all I have tonight.
Counsel Dean?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Mark Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only have one thing, I'd like to thank the Town Manager for coming with me down to Marcy Street, taking a looking at that sidewalk. There was a resident down there that took a nasty fall, and she just wants the sidewalk fixed. I don't know what it's going to take to get our sidewalks fixed in this town. Everybody knows we have bad sidewalks. So I would just ask residents out there, if you have a bad sidewalk, or you know you walk it on a bad sidewalk, let DPW know about it, so we can try and get it fixed. So just wanted to say thank you to the Town Manager for taking his time to come down there and take a look at it. That lady had a, that was a nasty accident that she had there. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Agenda item fifty-four, discuss next meeting day. Counsel Mark Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting is Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P.M. in the council chambers.
Fifty-five, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shania, seconded by Montigny, all in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.